Yeah.
Hi, gangs.
Hello there. Mayor, I'm having some technical difficulties tonight and don't have the PowerPoint for the study session. Do you have the agenda on you to read off of?
I do.
Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you. That's thoughtful, Jordan. Thank you.
Yeah.
FYI, that member Clark isn't going to be here for tonight's study session.
That's good. Patty, it looks like you were able to connect okay. Patty, thanks for making it tonight with all the technical difficulties you've got going on. It's not a Wednesday for technology. Patty, we have you muted somehow. There we go.
Oh, can you hear me now?
We can.
We good?
There we go. We lost you for a second, but you're back to audio.
Okay.
Okay, looks like we have everybody. Um, one, two, three, four, five. Yep. Okay, great. The gang's all here. So let's go ahead and call this Talent City Study Session of March 2nd to order at 5:45. Roll call, please.
Councilor Clark is absent today. Councilor Pranemirov?
Here.
Councilor Greider?
Here.
Councilor Pastizo?
Here.
Councilor Byers?
Here.
Councilor Para Miller?
Here.
And Mayor Ayers Flood?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. Item number two on the agenda is meeting accessibility. 2.1 is opportunity to translate and 2.2 is instructions for public. Hector?
So this is an opportunity for the meeting to be translated into Spanish, and if any attendees need this meeting translated into Spanish, to please raise their hand. And this is una pregunta para público, so I'm going to try to translate in español por favor, as this is my own. And I'll watch the attendees for anyone who raises their hand. And instructions for public testimony, and if any attendee would like to offer testimony during this meeting, they would, it's as simple as raising your hand and then to be called on by the mayor.
Great. Thank you so much, Hector. I, before we jump into item number three, I just want to say to everybody who's attending the meeting at 5:45 that we are in a study session. This is the regular meeting will start at 6:45. So with that, item number three on the study session agenda is League of Oregon Cities Public Records in Oregon. What city officials need to know? Staff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm excited to welcome Patty Muldahill tonight. She is the interim executive director at League of Oregon Cities, also previously their lead counsel. And Patty is here to share with us just a one-on-one overview of public records and what's important to know as public officials. And with that, Patty, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you, Jordan, and thank you, Mayor, and the rest of the council for having me today. I do have a PowerPoint. I'll share it, but before I do, just fair warning, I'm a big believer that these meetings and trainings are much more impactful if you ask questions as opposed to just listening to me talk to you for 40 minutes, which I imagine will be incredibly boring. So I probably won't be able to see all of you terribly well once I start sharing the screen. So if you have questions, please know that I know you don't normally probably do this during council meetings. It's fine to interrupt me and say I have a question. In my experience, it's better if you ask the question when you have it instead of trying to just hold off till the end because it may not make as much sense. And a lot of times the question you have, a colleague may also have as well, so it's just easier to kind of ask it. I won't be offended. I recognize that in this virtual world, it seems harder to interrupt people or more rude, but that's not the case. I won't be offended. So please just jump in and ask away. I think it will make it more interesting. I also tend, in my opinion, to keep my slides somewhat light. That's on purpose and is done because I like to talk more than have people read at me. I will share. I'll send Jordan the slideshow though when I'm done, so if you want to keep it afterwards, you can have it. And of course, I have things all over the place. So can you guys see my screen okay?
Yes, we see the slide. And I forgot to let you know ahead of time, since these study sessions occur right before our regular council meeting, folks may have their cameras off, they're eating food or getting the transition from work to council.
That makes sense. So I will not be offended. At some point, you will see me take a drink as well, so just do what you gotta do. I'm just appreciative that people are actually willing to be trained. So we're going to talk about public records today. It's historically not the most exciting topic in the world, but it is something that you all do unfortunately need to know about since you all sit on the city council. And if there's city staff in the room aside from Jordan, it's applicable to you guys as well. This is intended to be a high-level overview, but there's some specifics in here that will hopefully be helpful as well. Now I just have to find my hero. There we go. So the first thing I like to talk about was public records law, mostly because those of you who have touched on it at all might kind of think public records, ugh, right? Like it's such a pain in the rear end. And a lot of times I get questions from people saying, why do we even have this law? What's why? What's its purpose? And it's really twofold. And I think it's helpful to know the reasons behind it, not that it makes the law easier to deal with, but maybe it makes us a little more sympathetic to why we have it. And the first is so that our citizens are informed about what we do. As a former city staffer for almost 18 years, there were definitely moments where I didn't appreciate being told that I worked for so-and-so member of the community, but we really do. We're using their tax dollars, their fiscal resources, and essentially we are working for them and they have a right and maybe even obligation to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it. And because they can make a request of our public records, they can have those questions readily answered. The other reason we have the public records law is so that we know our history. So I know that you all are relatively new council in some respects, but my guess is either when you were running for office or since you've taken office, at some point, you may have asked yourself, why would we have ever done that? Why did we spend money this way? Why did we have this law on the books? How did we sign this contract? And because you're required to retain your records, you can arguably go back and you can learn why your predecessors on the council did what they did. You may not agree with it, but you might be able to understand the rationale and the reason for the decisions that were made ahead of you, which may give context to kind of where you are now as a community. So those are the two main reasons why we have a public records law. And then in Oregon, we have two ways that we look at public records. There's a requirement that you retain your records, and then there's a separate requirement on how we disclose those records. And we're going to take them in two separate instances because the requirements are different for both. I would use this picture for retention purposes, mostly because it's appropriate for city staff who tend to see how our records are actually managed and staffed. The reality is cities were created long before public records law existed, and so we didn't always have retention schedules. And so we just kind of put stuff in boxes or file cabinets or drawers. And now with retention schedules in place, we're supposed to cull through those documents and create some type of order. Some cities and counties and special districts have done better than others. But the first thing and most complicated thing to know, and you can blame this on lawyers, is that there are two different definitions of public records. And by that, I mean there is one definition for a public record that has to be retained. And then there is a separate definition for public record for when a record has to be disclosed. They're similar. They overlap, but there are some subtle differences. And so whenever you're in a situation and you're trying to identify if you have a public record, the first thing you want to ask yourself is, are you asking that question? Because you are trying to decide if you have to keep the record or you're asking yourself because you have to disclose that record to somebody. So we're going to start, like I said, with retention. So in order to know what you have to keep, so this is the records that cities are required to keep. If any information that is prepared, owned, used, or retained by the city, so retained's the big one. The city didn't have to inherently create the document, own it, or use it for it to be a public record. If the city just retained it, it can be a public record. So it's prepared, owned, used, or retained by the city that relates to any activity, transaction, or function of the city and is necessary to satisfy the fiscal, legal, administrative, or historical policies, requirements, or needs of the city. So if you think about it, you think about any piece of paper, any email, any text, any document that the city may have, it's probably a public record. It's a safe bet that it is because at a minimum, it's probably something the city retains. You probably got it because you were at some city function or dealing with some city business. And there's an argument to be made that maybe it has something to do with historical policies or needs of the city. So technically speaking, you want to be super careful with the records that you have because you may have to retain them. Then, like any good lawyer or law that's passed, we tell you what something is, and then there's a whole host of things that are not included. So we went over what is a public record, but then there's some examples of things that aren't. So extra copies of documents. So the example I always like to give is, do you guys get written packets of your meetings, like a packet that you can print out or that you can use at the council meeting? Okay, I'm seeing some shaking heads. Yeah. Okay, so if you have extra copies of those documents, then you don't have to keep them, right? So if you've got 15 copies, you only have to keep one. But here's the tricky part where people get stuck. For those of you that are city officials, do any of you take notes on your packets? If you take notes, is there a copy of the note you made somewhere else? If the answer is no, you've probably created a brand-new document the minute you put notes on your packet. And your city recorder probably doesn't have a copy of those notes. And so when the statute talks about copies of documents can be destroyed, they mean copies of the actual document that's been preserved. So if you took your packet and you made your own notes, you underlined things, you highlighted things, you wrote down questions you were going to ask, you are essentially creating a brand-new document that my guess is your recorder does not have a copy of. And so you're going to want to talk about how you handle those documents. Some city councils have a policy that essentially, if you take notes on your packet, you turn those back into the recorder so the recorder keeps those separate note-taking pages as part of the overall packet record. I know of some cities where they have a policy that the counselors can take them home, but they're not allowed to destroy them. And so when their time in office is done, they walk into City Hall and they draft off boxes of old packets. And then some cities do what I do, which is, you can see it, my camera. I have a little notebook that I keep, and any note I take, any post-it note I have goes into that. And our records custodian here is a league note. That's where all my notes are. And so if we would ever get a request, they would have them. But just make sure that you know extra copies of a document mean the actual copy of the original, not anything you would do. Stacks of publications. So if you get newspapers, if you get magazines, you can throw those away. Those are not considered public records. This is a tricky one. Messages on voicemail system. So under the Oregon Public Records Law, you are not required to keep voicemail messages. However, if you have one and a public records request comes in, you are required to disclose it. So you don't have to keep them, but if you did, you're going to have to disclose it. And then we always put the last bullet for somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but spoken communication that is not recorded is not considered a public record. So even though technology has almost ensured that we never actually have to speak to people face-to-face again or over the phone, just know that those communications are obviously not public records, and so they would not be subject to the statute. Every single city in Oregon, as well as the county, special districts, and local governments are required to maintain all of our public records or copies thereof in accordance with a specific retention schedule established by the state archivist. I'm not going to give you the schedule. For the most part, I think the only person in the city who has to know that schedule is your records custodian, which is typically your city recorder. What I always tell city elected officials and most city staff is, your job is to know that the records you have are probably public records, that you are not supposed to destroy them, and when you want to get rid of them, you give them to your recorder. And the recorder will identify what the actual retention schedule is. Bad news. Technically illegal to tamper with or destroy, conceal, mutilate, remove, or make a false entry in a public record. My guess is everybody on this call has maybe inadvertently done that at some point, right? You took a post-it note, somebody called you, you took a post-it note about the message, wrote the phone number down, and as soon as you return that call, you pitch the post-it note. That post-it note probably technically qualified as a public record. It probably wasn't something you were allowed to destroy or remove. What I tell people is if you've done that in the past, just try and do better in the future and take a look at how you can go about retaining those records in a way that actually meets the retention schedule requirement. So you've got to designate a specific records custodian within your city. That's specifically required. I've not pulled your governing documents, but my guess is it's your recorder, and I saw Jordan shaking her head earlier, so I'm assuming that's correct. But you have to specifically, under state law, have an actual records custodian. And that person is responsible for knowing the retention schedule and making sure the records are maintained in that manner. I always put this slide up here. So a lot of times when I talk with cities, they tell me that state agencies aren't terribly helpful, that they're not very useful at asking questions or providing help. That's not been my experience with the state archivists. If you ever get bored and you want to Google like state retention schedule, you can pull it up online pretty easily. But the reality is that a lot of times it's unclear as to which schedule applies. So sometimes like a record will look like it has to be retained for three years, but in a different section, it looks like it could qualify for something else. You have to keep it for five years. In my experience, I've always just called the state archivists and they will usually answer the question on the phone, and my power lights just went off. So can you even still see me?
Patty, we can still see you.
Okay, well then, as long as you can see me, I will keep going. Lights in my whole building just went off. Okay, so the state archivist is there to help if you have any questions. So then we're going to talk about disclosure. This is the part that tends to impact particularly elected officials more than the retention staff. The retention staff is usually almost exclusively managed by city staff. But disclosure is sometimes impactful for public officials. So we're going to have a different definition of public record here, and I want to touch on it a little bit. So it's any writing that contains information relating to the conduct of the city's business, which is prepared, owned, used, or retained by the city regardless of its physical form or characteristic. So what does this mean? So a public record for disclosure purposes, it's any piece of paper that you wrote on or that you received. It's email communications. It's text messages that you may have. It's audio recordings. It can even be social media posts. There we go. Somebody just turned the lights back on for me. So anything that is of some type of writing or document, if it has information relating to the city's business, it's probably a public record that's going to be subject to disclosure. Okay? Much like with the retention, there's a whole list of things that are not considered public records. So it doesn't include anything that does not relate to the conduct of the city's business and is contained on a privately-owned computer or device. So a lot of times people will do city business from, let's say, their private computer or city business from their private cellphone. And they will ask me, well, Patty, but I don't have to disclose the private stuff, right? So I'll use myself. So I have a government-owned cellphone. If I send text messages from that cellphone, let's say Jordan and I were texting about this training today, just confirming the time. Those business-related texts are in fact disclosable, even though they're on my personal cellphone, right? If they're on my personal cellphone, I have to disclose them. I also text my kids on the cellphone, right? Those texts would not be subject to disclosure, but that doesn't mean they're going to be kept secret. And so I'll give you an example. So let's say somebody wanted any and all texts that I sent between January 1st and January 15th, 2002. So I would have to turn my phone over to our records custodian, and they would have to go through my text messages to see which ones were subject to disclosure. So while the person requesting the records may not see the text exchange I have with my kids, the person calling through my records will. And everybody always says, I don't have anything to hide. It's no big deal. But think about, I don't know, if any of you have teenagers, mine are grown now. They're not teenagers, but there's been times, you know, like when my kid was 20 and she'd send a text and be like, I can't make rent this month. And I would text back, that's funny because on Instagram you were at the bar. So you have enough money for a cocktail. Why am I paying your rent? And then a series of, you know, not-so-nice texts would ensue. And so those texts aren't going to be on the front page of the paper, but the records custodian is going to see them. The other thing to worry about is if you do city business from a private device, be it your city cellphone, be it a city computer or be it a private cellphone or a private computer, and a matter ends up in some type of litigation, your personal devices could be confiscated as part of discovery. So a few years ago, there was an issue with some Department of Justice attorneys, and they had been doing, some of the attorneys had been doing some work from their personal computers, and those personal computers were seized for about three weeks while the metadata was pooled and analyzed as part of a discovery process with some litigation. So as much as you can, do your city business on city devices. If for some reason you run into an issue where you don't have the devices you need and budget restraints come into play, so the city can't purchase it, do everything you possibly can to set up separate accounts. So a lot of cities I work with, for example, there's probably still 30 or 40 cities who don't have city email accounts. They just don't have the budget to. My advice to those elected officials is to create a Gmail account that's only for city business. But things to think about. Generally speaking, if it's not related to the city business and it's on a private device, it's not subject to disclosure. Every single person, regardless of where they live or how they work, has a right to inspect your city's records. It's not limited to your city residents or business owners. Somebody living in Australia has the same right to inspect your records as somebody who's living a half a block away from City Hall. That right belongs to any person can ask to see your records. There are exemptions to these records. I'm not going to go through all of them because there's probably over 40 or 50 that are arguably applicable to cities directly and another 40 on top that are applicable to other ones. But what is important to know is there's two types of exemptions, and the purpose of both is essentially to say that generally speaking, you should assume that your records are subject to disclosure. In limited instances, cities have the discretionary right to refuse to disclose those records for a whole host of reasons. So one of the common ones that everybody fights about is we don't release records that have social security numbers, right? We redact social security numbers for obvious reasons. If you've gotten a legal advice in the form of a written opinion, you don't have to disclose that legal advice. That's another common one. But in some of these ones, you're going to have to weigh, is the public interest in releasing that document, does it outweigh a city's desire to keep it confidential? What I always tell people is it's not for city elected officials or even most city staff to determine whether or not a record can be held exempt. Those decisions should be made by the recorder, city manager, and sometimes in consultation with your city attorney. So generally, a good operating thumb for me is that if you create it or you wrote it, it's probably going to be disclosable. And even if you're not afraid of what it happens to look like on stand, I always tell people, think about what it's going to look like if it's on the front page of the paper. So I worked for a city for a while, and we had a pretty big, pretty large city park, and we had a massive urban deer population. And our city parks department wanted to have a culling of the deer because they And our city parks department wanted to have a culling of the deer because they were starting, there was too many and they were starting to destroy the habitat and causing problems. We ended up having somewhere between probably eight to 12 public hearings on the deer cull, and they lasted hours upon hours. And my parks director was taking notes during the whole time. Things got a little interesting in terms of public comment. The best example I can give, for example, is a very nice and very emphatic woman got up and told us that we should figure out a way to develop, manufacture condoms for the deers and figure out a way to put them on the deers because then they wouldn't be able to procreate and we would solve our problem. And, you know, staff had thoughts on those. And some staff wrote those thoughts down. And so when we got our public records request, my parks director came in and he had his little notebook, and I said, oh, here, give me your notebook. I said, I don't wanna give it to you, and I said, I need it, give it to me, and he looked like he was gonna cry. He's like, I just don't, I think you're gonna be mad. And I opened up his notebook and there were things in there like, these people are smoking meth. What is wrong with these people? These people are insane. And he said, can we keep those out of the disclosure? No. And, you know, two weeks later, when we released the documents, the front pages of the paper was, city parks director thinks citizens smoke meth. And so, what I say this is, though, don't ever rely that your city staff is gonna be able to keep records out of the public record or out from disclosure. So, think it, don't write it. We were all taught, think it, don't say it. I think the rule of thumb is also think it, don't write it, if you're worried about things ending up in the paper. What's important to know about those exemptions for reasons when you can keep records disclosed, it's a voluntary discretion. So just because the state allows you to keep those records confidential, doesn't mean that the city has to keep those records confidential. You can decide to voluntarily disclose those records yourself. If you do decide to disclose those records, you can pick and choose who they are disclosed to. One of the common ones that my city did, it's really common for police investigatory records not to be disclosable, particularly the contents of the actual investigation itself. I was never entirely sure why, but it was fairly common in my community that whenever there was a suicide, I would say at least 30% of the time, the family would want to see our investigatory reports and records. And we would voluntarily disclose our full reports to the families of the suicide victim and then not disclose it to anybody else as a way to at least attempt to help them provide some type of closure. So you can make voluntary disclosures. Here's what's super important, particularly for elected officials to know. So when I, when I talked earlier, I talked about how your city has to have a records custodian by statute, and it's important that your records custodian is the only person who takes requests for public records. And the reason I say that is because once the city has accepted a public records request, there are some timeframes that automatically trigger. So you have five days to acknowledge the receipt of a public records request. So once one comes in, you have five days to acknowledge it. And there's some specific things that have to be in that acknowledgement under state law. Again, that's the recorder's issue to worry about, not necessarily elected officials. But there's five days in which you have to acknowledge it. And then an additional 10 days from that date, you either have to fulfill the request or you have to provide an estimate of how long it's going to take you to request that. The reason this matters is if you fail to acknowledge or you fail to fulfill or provide a written timeframe within those timeframes, your city can be held responsible for violating the public records law. And so, I've seen this happen before where an elected official was maybe, say, at the grocery store or the bank, and somebody that they know came up to them and said, hey, I wanna file this public records request, can you please take it to me? And the elected official thinks to myself, ah, I'm going to City Hall tomorrow, I'll see Jordan then, I'll just drop it off to her. And then life gets in the way and you get super busy, and your kids are running around and your spouse is asking you questions, and you just forget. Not intentional, not deliberate. And you don't remember until seven days after you took that request in the grocery store. And now we have a statutory violation because you didn't acknowledge it within five days. So the rule of thumb for anybody besides the city recorder is that if somebody tries to give you a public records request, it's, I'm sorry, I'm not allowed to take those, you need to speak with the city's recorder, here's how you can contact that person. And it's the city recorder then who has to make sure that they understand and follow the five and 10-day requirement. The other big reason why it's important for elected officials to not take public records is how challenges to public record denial can be handled. So if the city or a city employee denies a request for public records, and a denial can include not acknowledging that you've got them, the appeal has to be filed with your county district attorney. There is no discretion. So if somebody wants records that you've denied access to, and it's the city or a city employee who's denied access, they have to go to the county district attorney. However, if it's an elected official who denies the request, or again, failed to acknowledge it because you accepted it, the appeal automatically goes to court, not the district attorney. And to make it more complicated, particularly for a city like yours, given your location, is they can choose which court they want to go to. So they can either go to the circuit court in your own county, or they can file the appeal in Marion County Circuit Court, which is where I live up here in Salem. Which is gonna be way more costly and expensive for a city like yours to have to litigate a case in the Marion County Circuit Court instead of dealing with your local district attorney. So all the more reason for the denial to come from city employees instead of city elected officials. Okay. I'm gonna finish up with social media, unless you guys have any questions so far on public records disclosure or retention. Yes, Jordan?
Patty, I have one question, this goes back to the beginning. The rule around keeping records of drafts, like if you are working on a draft and passing it back and forth, is it all drafts must be kept or just the final document?
I would tell you, you should keep all drafts because they're each individually created records. And from my perspective, if we're doing it in, let's say, any type of Word document or Google document, I try and save each new version with version one through whatever, so we always know when somebody touches it separately. If it gets super voluminous, so like if you were gonna update your land development code, my gosh. Right? Then it's like, you could have a 500-page document, but the only changes were on pages 2, 22, and 37. What I started doing when there are records like that is I wouldn't keep the whole 500-page document 25 times over. I would, I would note where the substantial changes were and only keep those pages. So I would keep the original draft, and then if there were only five pages where there was changes, I'd create essentially a new cover letter and say, the second draft only changed these five pages, here they are. So I was kind of cutting back on some of my data storage rates. Because, I mean, the last time we updated our land development code, I think we went through over 19 drafts before we were done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You're welcome. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, not seeing anybody else. Okay, so social media. I'm going to preface this by saying, this is an emerging area of the law. And so, social media has been around for us for years and years. The reality is the law is not quite with us. And so, the reason I touch on this is because social media can be considered a public record. So, basic questions I get about social media. Is the content posted on social media public record? The answer is yes. Must social media content be retained? For the most part, yes. And must social media content be disclosed upon request? For the most part, yes. There's no state statute that I can point to that specifically says Twitter feeds, Facebook posting, Instagram posts are considered public records. We're not there yet as a state, we're not even there yet in terms of case law from the federal government. But it's clear from some guidance we've gotten from the state archivists, as well as some decisions we are getting from courts, that social media should be assumed to be considered a public record. So I can give you some tips on this. So there's, the tricky part with social media is really the types of accounts that we have. You have public-facing accounts, and then we have what we believe to be our private accounts. And I wanna stress belief to be. So your public accounts are obvious, right? Like your city has its own Facebook page. The city's police department has a Twitter feed. Those are obviously public-facing accounts. The tricky part is, is your private accounts. So, does the mayor have a private Facebook account? But you post city information on the Facebook page? And how much city business do you post on your personal page before your personal page is now considered a public-facing page? And what does that trigger for you? And I would like to tell you that there's a bright line rule, but we're not there yet. If I was a betting woman, based on the advice that we're getting from the Secretary of State and where some of the federal courts are coming down, if you do anything related to city business on your private account, I would tell you to assume that you have transformed your private social media account into a public-facing social media account, and the records retention rules and disclosure rules probably apply to those private accounts if you're doing city business. So, how private is your private account? It depends. So according to the Oregon State Archivist, your social media posts are gonna be considered public records if the posts are made on an official public agency account. So that's easy, right? The city's Facebook page and Twitter feed, those are considered public records. You're gonna need to retain those and figure out a way to disclose them. If it's your private account, so if it's a counselor's private Facebook page, but it's being used to distribute information for the city to the public, it's probably considered public. So if your private account is used to conduct government business, then you should assume that it's subject to the Oregon Public Records Law. Now that's all the advice that we get from the state archivists. They don't tell us how much information we have to distribute from our private account for it to become public. They don't tell us what type of information we have to distribute for it to become public, it's noticeably vague. And I think that's intentional because they don't have any guidance from the legislature or from the courts in Oregon yet. But we do have, yep, go ahead, sorry, I couldn't see hands.
No, it's fine, sorry, I'm just jumping in. So I'm wondering if there's a distinction between sharing information that the city already generated without editing it at all? And between that and making your own post, sharing information that the city is disseminating already?
Yeah. So in Oregon, not yet, but in the Fourth Circuit, yes. So the Fourth Circuit in a case called Davidson v. Randolph, the counselor simply was just resharing like the date and time of public meetings, like literally taking the city's Facebook notice about like a budget committee hearing and resharing it on their own. And the Fourth Circuit opined that they were essentially, they were a public official sharing public information, and that in and of itself turned their private account into a public account. Now, that wasn't necessarily true in the Eighth Circuit, they were a little bit more open-minded. But I think what turned in the Eighth Circuit opinion is that that private account was created well before the person who had it had even run for elected office and had had a history of sharing city, like, basic information. And so they just kind of essentially said, they're just continuing past practice, they're not really pushing a city agenda per se. What Jamie Heffner and I, she's the other attorney at the league, what we generally suggest is that if you want to share city information, right? You wanna share your meetings, your public events or whatever, to be completely and totally conservatively safe, I would create a separate social media account. So you have your private Instagram, private Twitter, you know, private Facebook, and that's literally just for your friends and your family, and you do nothing city-related on there. You don't even share information about a city farmer's market on air. It is, it is completely devoid of anything related to your city work. And then you would create a separate social media account for your city work. So you would almost essentially have two Facebook pages, two Twitter feeds, two Instagrams, two, the Lord, I can't even keep up anymore, all the different types of social media platforms that are out there. Some cities have taken it to a higher level, higher level examples, and they create social media policies that essentially require their elected officials, if you want to engage anything on social media, you have to do it from a city-maintained social media account. So I know of one city, for example, where if their elected officials wanna have a Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, or whatever account where they would do anything, even big or small, with the city, they have a city Facebook account, for example, and they have access to it and they can post on it. But that way the city makes sure that they're properly retaining all of those records and those posts, and the counselors and mayor don't have to worry about it themselves. If I were a betting woman, based on the advice that generally comes from the Attorney General on public records and what the state archivist said, I think, I think Oregon probably comes down more like the Fourth Circuit and says that if you share any information that's related to city business and you happen to be a city-elected official, I would assume that your social media accounts probably become a public account.
I have a question on that.
Yep.
We have elections coming up in November, and if, say, there's a counselor that's campaigning, you know, is campaigning considered a private effort rather than a public official effort?
Uh huh. So, what, yes, provided they're not mixing, right? So this is hard. So, I would actually say in that instance, you would probably want three accounts. If you're somebody who's active on social media, not to be super complicated. You'd want your purely private account, you'd want your existing counselor account, right? I am a city counselor for, sitting city counselor for the city of talent, here's my information. And then you would want your campaign account. Because, just because you're campaigning, you may wanna put things on there that are not necessarily city business or related to city business directly, right, as part of your campaign. So what I've seen a lot of, a lot of people do is move to that third account. Like every time they run, they're elect, they have their own separate campaign account. Now, a lot of times the campaign account and the city account are gonna be duplicative of one another, right? Cuz you're gonna share the same event. But by keeping that, that campaign one separate, it gives you a little bit more leeway if you're going to post something that people may not like from your city account. And I say that because that's more not necessarily from a public records perspective, but what I would call a council rules perspective. So a lot of council rules have requirements about when counselors can speak negatively about a city action or can, how they can behave about like a city ordinance that was passed. But if you're campaigning because you disagree with the way the city's being run or with the way like policy's going, that may be something for your city campaign page, so you'll see a lot of times they'll be a little bit separate. It's not necessarily a public records issue, more, I would say, of a, of a city rules issue is what I've seen. Anybody else? Okay, so the tricky part with social media is you do have to retain it. So the information that you post on, say, your police department's Twitter feed, on your city's Facebook feed, if you have an Instagram account, you are probably gonna have to retain those. And to be super complicated, it's kind of like identifying how long you have to retain emails. In Oregon, our retention policy is based on essentially the content, not necessarily the form. So there's not a retention schedule that says you have to keep emails for five years. What it is, is based on the content. So the content of the document will tell you how long you have to save it. So, for example, if you're just posting the date, time, and place of a budget hearing on Facebook, the retention schedule's gonna tell you, you have to keep that post for three years. But if you're tweeting about volunteer opportunities for the city, that's actually probably only a two-year retention requirement. So when you have social media posts, you're gonna wanna figure out what the content is. Now, in practicality, what some people do is they essentially figure out what's the longest thing that I would ever post in terms of the retention schedule, and then they just save everything for the longest retention schedule so they don't have to go through each content period. But once you figure out how long you need to retain something, the second step is how you're actually going to do it. I am not a tech person, so this is just based on my general understanding, so please don't ask technical answers cuz I don't even know how to use Twitter. But, my understanding is that apps like Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, they have some automatic data storage processes in place that you can use. My understanding is that Facebook is particularly good because they have a specific government platform that you can use. We don't generally, and neither does the Secretary of State encourage you to rely solely upon those because their retention schedules may not necessarily mesh with Oregon's retention schedules. So we've seen two other ways for cities and counties who've been doing this. Some keep a log of their actual social media activity and screenshots of it, somebody does that maybe once a week. And then they just keep those logs and activity photos. And then there's other companies like Archive Social and Smarsh that allow you to more customize how those records and posts are actually maintained so that you can make sure that it's happening in accordance with the Oregon's policy. Where the retention schedule comes into play is not so much the city's Facebook, you know, city's official Facebook page or city's official Twitter. It's more those individual ones, right? It's the individual counselor's page or mayor's page because, because retaining those requires some level of access and ownership. And typically, retention again is remembered as done by city staff, not the elected official. So figuring out how that retention works, when the person who's usually responsible for retaining it isn't somebody who inherently has access to the account, can be difficult. So what I'm starting to see, probably in the last two or three years, is the city council having some really direct conversations about what they, as a city, want their social media policy to be. And not just when does the city itself share something on the Facebook, but how can elected officials use social media, when they can use it, and how they can retain it. And they're starting to develop some robust social media policies just to make sure they comply with the public records policy. Um, and then some First Amendment issues that come into play with social media posts by elected officials as well. Uh, if it's something that your city's ever interested in, um, we've not created one at the league per se, but we have, uh, stolen some really good ones from other cities who've already done it. Um, we've worked with their city attorneys, and we've got copies of them, if it's something that you guys are ever interested in. Other retention solutions, um, I have seen some cities that require, um, elected official social, social media accounts to be created with city email addresses. And the reason that is, is that their IT can come in through the backend and retain those for them. So it's, and it's limited, right? So the recorder can go in with your email address and make sure they're retaining their records properly, so you don't have to worry about it. Um, some limit the number of social media accounts. Um, so for example, the city can have a Facebook feed and a Twitter feed, but the parks department can't have its own, right? So if the parks department wants to advertise, say, the opening of a new playground, they do it through the city's main Facebook page and Twitter feed, not their own. Um, we started to see the number of social media accounts being limited as it became the more and more clear that the government was going to consider these accounts public records purposes as a way to kind of manage overall records management for the city. I've also seen some cities limit the number of persons who can actually post content on these social media platforms as a way to kind of make sure that content doesn't get out of control. Um, and then I've seen some social media policies go to the point where they're telling people to essentially, like, you can't put direct messages on others' feeds, right? So don't, don't post on Citizen Mary Smith's Twitter feed about city business, because did your post on her feed somehow then also become a public record that the city has no way of maintaining, because they don't control that feed in any way, shape, or form? And so starting to kind of see more limits on how social media is being used and who can access it. Not because cities are trying to limit what their elected officials can say or do, um, not because they don't want to share openly with citizens, but because they're trying to figure out a way to comply with public records laws that have not yet quite caught up with the technology itself, and they don't want to stumble into an inadvertent violation, is where we're starting to see some things go. Questions on that? No? Okay. So the last thing I always like to do, and again, I'll, I'll send Jordan this actual PowerPoint, so you have the embedded link. There's a few really good, um, what I would call resources. The first is the Oregon Attorney General's Public Records Manual. It's actually called Public Records and Public Meetings. My notes are pretty thick, it's about that thick. Um, and a lot of people look at it and think, oh my goodness, I'm never going to read it. Uh, it's actually super helpful. It's meant to be really informative to the average member of the public. It's not meant to be read and reviewed and used by attorneys. It's really super user friendly. I would say that most municipal attorneys probably use it as a starting point for their research when we get questions about whether or not something is or is not a public record, or if we do or do not have to disclose it. It's a good contextual document for elected officials to take a look at every once in a while. The other thing that I recommend everybody take a look at once or twice is the Secretary of State's retention schedule. Again, I know I said elected officials are not responsible for knowing how long records have to be retained, but I think if you would just peruse it, maybe once or twice every couple of years, you'd gain an understanding for how arduous the retention schedule can be for your city staff and recorders. There's the amount of deviations between which records have to be stored for one year, three years, five years, fifteen years, seventy-five years, and definitely, it's quite expansive. Um, and it's a pretty difficult task to manage. Um, so it's good to just kind of keep in context sometimes of what you're looking at. If your city does not currently have an actual policy um, on the use, retention, ownership, and disclosure of public records, um, I'm happy to let you use ours as a starting point. Believe the governmental entity, so we have one ourselves, just to make sure we're complying with the statutes. Um, and then if you're not already doing so, you do have the ability to assess fees for the production and disclosure of public records. You just have to have them established before you assess them. And so we could certainly provide you that as well, um, if you needed a copy of that. Any final questions?
Patty, I have one last final question.
Sure.
Electronic versus paper records. Is it okay if we just keep one version of a document?
Yeah. There are some, if you look at the Secretary of State's retention, there's, there's some, when you retain them electronically, you're supposed to have certain security level protocols in place. I don't understand them, because again, I don't understand tech. Um, but you just want to make sure technically that they comply with those security standards, in case there was ever anything that goes wrong with your server, and you could actually be able to get them back out. Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you all for having me.
Thank you for coming. Uh, I, you know, I've, I've had this training, and I've had it from LOC before, and it, I learn something new every single time. I'm really grateful. Good job. Um, any, any final questions or comments before we adjourn the meeting?
Um, just thank you, Patty, and just a reminder to everyone, this is the same link for the regular meeting, so feel free to stay signed in.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you all very much.
Patty's session's adjourned at six thirty-three, and we'll see everybody at six forty-five on this link.